Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Thursday, March 28th, 2024. And I'd like to call the meeting to order at 9:31 and acknowledge that the Seashell, that the Sunshine Coast Regional District does their business on the unceded lands of the Seashell and Squamish nations. We have an agenda before us. May I have a motion to? Oh, sorry, we have, we have some new business.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to have a item of new business, which is a notice of motion.
Thank you. We're going to add that item of business to new mo-, the notion, notice of motion to new business. Any other changes to the agenda this morning? Oh, great. I'm looking for a motion to accept. We have a motion. All in favor? Okay, that passes. We have an agenda. We're going to start with presentations and delegations. We have a senior manager for B C Transit, Rob Rigma, here in the room. And I invite you to come forward and give your presentation. Thank you.
Excellent. We'll let Ahmed get the presentation up for us. Yeah, we're here today to talk to you about the Sunshine Coast Handy Dart Service Review that B C Transit and staff at the S C R D conducted over the period of November through till January, end of January. As Ahmed's getting that up, I'd just like to give credit to some S C R D staff that helped out during this report. That was Aiden Buckley, Anna Adam, of course, G M Shelley, Yang Yong, and, and obviously Ahmed Kidwai. So very happy to work with the team here on doing a Handy Dart Service Review. You might remember we did a Transit Future Action Plan two years ago. One of the directives coming from this board was to do some similar analysis of the Handy Dart system and look for opportunities for, for improvements within that system. Go ahead, Ahmed. Perfect. So what we'll do is we'll talk real quickly, and I only have 10 minutes. There's, there was a bigger report that obviously is going to be, was distributed to, to the board. This is an abridged version of that, but we will go through just a bit on the survey background and methodology, talk a little about the operational performance of the system, get into some of the feedback from the survey in terms of service satisfaction, and then obviously get to some of the improvement and expansion opportunities for the Handy Dart system and finalizing with some service recommendations. Thank you. You can go to the next slide. So we did, you can go to the next slide. Thanks, Ahmed. So again, just for refresher for everybody, either online or around the board table, you know, Handy Dart is a door-to-door, shared-ride transit service for passengers with cognitive or physical disabilities that, that make it where they are unable to use conventional public transit without assistance. Very often, Handy Dart service is associated with seniors. We have many, many seniors that ride Handy Dart, but that's not the precursor to being a qualified candidate for, for Handy Dart service. It really comes down to those, those cognitive or physical disabilities that, that make it challenging to use public transit in our conventional transit system. So as mentioned, this board had requested a review of the service. So we put together a study to measure the operational performance, understand the usage of the current system, gauge the public's opinion of the system, also gauge where they saw some key system improvements as well as some, not only just system improvements, but also opportunities for further investment and expansion of the service. So we did actually a very fulsome public engagement process. Again, have to again give kudos to the S C R D staff for all of their support. We actually did individual phone surveys. We tried to contact every active Handy Dart customer and engage them in a phone survey. We also provided an online survey that was open to the public. So any caregivers, people whose family members were taking Handy Dart, we want to get their feedback as well. We also provided paper surveys at a lot of S C R D facilities around the region for anybody who wasn't online or mobile so that they could get in a little bit more of an analog response. And then we also conducted three different focus groups over the course of, of this study. In total, we had 88 Handy Dart clients and caregivers complete the survey. We were actually targeting to try to get to at least 15% of our Handy Dart clients to respond, and we got to 17. So we hit that target, which we thought was, was a good sample size. And then we had 21 people actually engage us in those three open houses that, that we, that we did. And we really appreciate all of the, the public that came out for those. And we also had some drivers, some Handy Dart drivers as well from the system come out, which was really good to get their feedback as well. So just getting into operational performance, myself and Ahmed will kind of cover this off. I'm going to be, I'm going to kind of summarize these slides and not just necessarily go through all the points because we could, we could take up a lot of time to get dive into it. But as you can see in the passenger rides graph, we've seen steady passenger rides increasing since the COVID pandemic, which is great to see. The numbers you see there are B C Transit's kind of year-to-date when we, when we did, did this reporting. So they're all relative. But the reality is, is that we've seen increases every year. We predicted that by March, we would probably reach 7,000 rides this year. Ahmed and his team basically supported that statistic by providing ridership numbers that said we hit 7,200 rides. And based on that trend line, we're going to, we're going to reach all-time new highs next fiscal. So we're going to actually probably see if that trend line continues. We're going to see more Handy Dart rides than pre-pandemic, so 2019 levels. So the system is, is, has made a great comeback. It's quite healthy, but clearly that's putting some strain on the resources within the system. Go ahead, Ellen.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a slide illustrates the ridership type. Ambulatory trips are the, for the passengers who are boarding the bus without any assistance. So 69% of the, of, 63% of our passengers for 2023 are of this, this particular category. For, for the folks who are requiring some type of assistance boarding or during the, during the ride, they were with the attendance. So they, they amount to 914 out of 7,200 rides that we have provided for 13%. And the passengers who require mobility aid, like wheelchairs or scooters, they were about 24%, amount to 764. So overall, that was almost 7,300 passengers for 2023.
Perfect. And then when we look at some other statistics that, that B C Transit monitors on a fairly regular basis, rides per hour, so that's how many people we actually can provide rides to, kind of averaged out over the, over the day. You can see that's rose from 0.58 back in the pandemic, 2020, 2021, up to almost two van rides per hour, which is, which is actually trending quite well. One of the other key metrics is unmet trips. So that's the number of people that have actually tried to book a ride but could not get a ride that they booked or that they wanted to book at that time. Good, you know, at 2.57%, that's actually within what we'd call acceptable B C Transit standards. The one statistic that we've been working on with the S C R D and, and the numbers kind of show that is what we call subscription trips. So a subscription trip is a reoccurring preset appointment trip. So typically, a lot of times it's for people with, with medical appointments, ongoing medical appointments. They have an ongoing subscription trip. But what happens is if that subscription trip ratio gets too high, you'll see in these numbers, we had it as high as 88%. What it does, it kind of clogs up the system and then any spontaneous trips for other users, there's not a lot of space for us to accommodate them. So just an opportunity and, and something that I know Ahmed and his team have been working on, and they've actually already started to get that number down around 75%. We would kind of say targeting 60 to 70, 70% subscription trips is kind of what we're looking for. So, but all in all, some very good statistics here as well.
Okay, speaking of that, subscription trips, we provided out of 72, 64, 64 trips. There were about 75% of them from 88. We have dropped it down to 75%. And I'm very pleased to report. Sorry. Thank you. And I'm very pleased to report that for the first three months of this year, it has come down to 72% now. So the trend is good. We're hoping to meet what is the threshold for around 64, 65%. So we can have more seats available for one-time rider and casual riders.
Excellent. And then just in terms of costing, just so it'd be good for the board to understand some of the cost ratios that are involved. What you'll see at the very bottom, that operating cost ratios, you'll notice in 2020, 2021, in the pandemic, we have costs of $118 per ride, and that's because your cost base was about the same and ridership dropped dramatically. What you'll see over progressive years, as that ridership has returned, we're actually up to around $56 per ride, which is under the provincial average. The provincial average is around $60. Pre-COVID, the cost per ride in the Sunshine Coast was around $86. So not only have we had that ridership return, but I would say we've obviously found some efficiencies within the system to get our cost per ride in line with the provincial average, which, which is a good place to be. To compare that, your conventional transit system, the cost is about $9 per ride. So it just goes to show you why, and when we talk about custom registration, we really want to make sure that we're saving custom Handy Dart service for those with the highest need. It comes with the highest cost. It's a, it's a, it's a door-to-door, very customer-focused service. It comes with that cost. So every opportunity we have to improve our conventional transit system and work with people to ride the conventional transit system just helps open up more space for those with the highest need on the Handy Dart system. The other piece that I'll just add is without, as that ridership has returned and we haven't been able to expand the transit system, so we haven't put additional investment. And that's not because of this board. This board's been very supportive, but there have been some challenges with the provincial funding of, of side of things over the pandemic. Of course, your cost base has basically stayed the same as your ridership has increased. These cost ratios will adjust as we spend and invest in the system. But typically, what we like to do is invest in the system and hopefully that grows ridership and the ratios balance themselves back out.
So the service span as, at the present stage is that our commercial transit is, we provide service from 5 o'clock in the morning to almost 1:30 in the morning. Handy Dart services are 8:30 to 4:30 Monday to Friday, 10 to 3 o'clock on Saturday. And at this time, we have no Sunday or holiday service. Progressively increasing service based, you will hear more about what the recommendations and the feedback from the general public was during our consultation, and Rob will touch more on that. But progressively, service increasing the service first in the available days of the service and span of hours each day, which we are focusing on that. And the boundaries should always be the priority after, for the long-term goals for equitable service. Improving the service and mimicking that Handy Dart service to conventional service hours and whatnot would be great. It would definitely improve the accessibility of the service for clients who are only restricted, but that's another conversation to be. Our key, 2023, our key performance indicator, the statistics is at a glance, is about what we have for our registered client are 660 and active are 245. That means that 245 people booked with one, at least one ride in last three months. So we call them active clients. And based on that and based on the ridership that we had for the year for 72, 64 divided by the hours, it's about two passengers per service hours. And each passenger, if you divide that, it comes up to around 605 rides each month they were taking. So cost, Rob has spoken about it, $56.29. And one interesting fact, just in the end, I should mention is that our late cancellation, no-shows, cancellation on the door is just below 2, 3, 3%, which is very good as when you compare that to industry standard.
Yeah. So from an operational standpoint, the system seems to be performing quite well. But of course, then we have to go to the public and find out what the public's opinion of the service is. Those, you know, we've got those, those stats and then, you know, we want to have the, obviously, customer feedback. So through the survey, and there's some detailed, obviously more detailed information and graphs in the, in the final report, but to summarize some of those kind of key findings. At the end of the day, Handy Dart users on the Sunshine Coast continue to be satisfied with the service that's provided. And you see the stats there, over 60% of online clients surveyed, or sorry, online respondents, and 82% of clients were neutral satisfied or very satisfied with the service. Drivers, this came through very clearly in our focus groups. Your drivers are doing an excellent job. They're well thought of. They're doing a great job. And your clients really respect the job that they do. And I think that extends beyond just drivers and into the, the staff that are, that are all involved in, in delivering Handy Dart service across the coast. Handy Dart buses are arriving on time. So we're getting to, to our clients in a timely manner, and we're taking them to their destinations. And then that last one, Handy Dart wait trip times on bus are satisfactory. So we sometimes use the term hostage time. Sometimes in the Handy Dart system, people get onto a bus, their destination is only 15 minutes away, but because we have to pick up two or three other people, drop them off at other destinations, they maybe don't arrive at their destination for half an hour, 45 minutes. So we measure that as a statistic, kind of an efficiency statistic with, with riders. And here on the coast, those Handy Dart kind of wait trip times are satisfactory. People are happy with, with their time on the bus. And in fact, just a little affectionate side note, one of the ladies during one of the public houses actually said she didn't care how long she was on the bus because it was fun to ride around the coast and enjoy her time on the bus, which is always, it's always nice to hear those types of, those types of feedback. So just some areas of, of improvement that were identified through, through the surveys and the focus groups. Booking our Handy Dart rides is an area for improvement. And what this comes from is, is actually people wanting to book a ride at the time they want and not necessarily being able to get the time that they, that they want. So that, that kind of all gets lumped into booking. So residents have to book a week or more in advance in most cases. Most of those clients, when we say dissatisfied with that booking experience, I think it's more the lead time. So how, how far in advance they have to actually plan to book a ride. And obviously, focus groups felt that the booking lead times, those booking lead times were too long. So obviously, working with staff to try to, to improve those and obviously adding more capacity into the system will help to, to improve those. Availability of Handy Dart buses when needed can be improved, and it's, you know, these are, these are kind of related. When we say they're dissatisfied with the wait time for a bus, that again is the wait time for them to actually get the bus that they want to take at the time that they want to take. And one of the things that focus groups did tell us was that we don't have enough buses on the road during peak times. So the service is very heavily subscribed in the morning period, in the afternoon period. We're taking people to day programs. You know, obviously, the morning time's a busy time for people who want to go shopping, do those social trips. And then, of course, the afternoons, when we're returning and bringing them home. So at those peak times, as Ahmed said, we have, we only have two buses on the road. So we can only manage so many passengers. So by adding additional buses into the system, we should be able to increase that capacity. And then the last one is just custom registration. So I hinted on that. So when somebody wants to get access to Handy Dart services, they have to go through a custom registration process. They actually get scheduled to meet with an occupational therapist and do an assessment on their cognitive and physical abilities to get to a bus stop, to get on, onto the bus. And then we basically decide whether they're eligible for Handy Dart service, whether they're temporarily eligible, maybe they have just an injury that's preventing them for a, a short period of time to be able to use conventional transit. Or in some cases, they get assessed that they are, they are able-bodied enough to ride the conventional transit system. The challenge is, is that B C Transit kind of has a target of when somebody requests that registration of a week to two weeks to get them in, assessed and returned. And right now, we're taking over a month in the system to get somebody assessed and, and actually eligible. Which, again, if you, let's say, hurt your knee and it's a four-week, five-week kind of time period where you're immobile, right now, you wouldn't even qualify, we wouldn't get you through the system to qualify you for Handy Dart service by the time you're pretty much healed and, and ready to carry on. So again, working with staff to, to try to decrease some of those wait times is, is going to be a key focus. Okay, so that all leads us to what are some of our service opportunities. So I mentioned it in the last slide, but here are service improvements kind of requested in order of preference from, from the public. Number one, improve that booking process, you know. And, and I think there's some opportunities. B C Transit is currently looking at a custom dispatch software that we hope to use provincially that's going to provide a foundation for scheduling, dispatching, better reporting and interfaces for booking in real time. So we're going to, you know, start to roll that process out, which I think will definitely help. And obviously, staff are going to continue to look for some short-term improvements while we, while we look to procure that provincial kind of dispatch solution. But identified as kind of one of our number one priorities. Number two, improve that custom registration process, decrease those wait times for people that want to access the Handy Dart service here on the coast. And then number three, as Ahmed's mentioned and already working towards, reduce some of those, those subscription trips slightly so that we have more flexibility in the system for people who want to take more spontaneous social trips within, within the system. In terms of service expansion, so how we can improve, so the, the slide before was kind of some of those service improvements. These are more some of those service expansion improvements that we could make. Number one, this was kind of the number one request, was to increase that peak capacity. So we are fully subscribed in those morning and afternoon times. We actually can't book in a lot of cases. We have to, you know, move people who are booking trips into those off-peak times because we are so subscribed during those peak times. So by adding additional bus or two or three down the road will allow us to increase those peak times and increase the capacity of the service. Number two was increasing weekend service span and adding the number of service days. So clearly, through the surveys, the lack of service on Sundays, the shortened windows. Right now, we currently end the service at 4:30. Not having service on holidays was recognized. And 60 to 70% of respondents rank those in kind of their top three choices as opportunities for improvement. And then lastly, increasing service later on weekdays. So I just mentioned that, you know, the service stops at 4:30. So expanding that further out, what that'll do is actually help us spread out some of that capacity, offer more times for those casual riders that, that want to access the system. So, you know, looking at week, later service on weekdays is, is another improvement. And I will just make a note that increasing the geography of the service span, so increasing the, the scope and geography that this current service covers, was actually ranked quite low versus some of these other initiatives. So, you know, again, in terms of focusing on where we should focus, and probably leads us to the next slide, Ahmed. You know, what are our top recommendations? So the good news is, I'm happy to report that, that through the transit improvement process and through provincial funding, that we have been approved for the S C R D's request for 550 hours of Handy Dart service expansion. So we have that slated for implementation of July of 2024. So based on these survey engagement results, we do recommend utilizing those hours that we have for this year in the following ways. So number one, increasing that weekend service span, adding the number of service days. So with those hours, with 275 of those hours, annual hours, we can add Sunday and holiday service to the Handy Dart system to close that gap in terms of the, the days of the week. We'll also be able to increase and extend service hours only by an hour, but that's just because of a function of the, of the number of hours that we have. So that would use up another 275 hours of the 550. But at least even extending it one hour just gives us another hour of service, which, which will help. Again, long-term, we'll speak to a bit of long-term. We, we want to continue to kind of invest and, and expand that. And then lastly, obviously, this is more on the S C R D and some of our operational team to work with, with the staff here to improve that custom registration process and decrease those, those wait times. So we think those are some of the short-term options that we have. Going into the future and looking as we are about to start our transit improvement process again for the next round of funding, increasing that ridership capacity by adding additional Handy Dart buses has been clearly highlighted as an opportunity. That, you know, will be something that I'll work with staff and we'll come back and present to the board on what that kind of would look like from a cost perspective. But that was clearly highlighted as an opportunity. We, we can't do that this year because we only had the hours that were approved. We didn't request a bus. But this would mean requesting hours and a bus, an additional bus resource in future service expansion requests. Continue to work to increase those hours of operation, the hours of service, so we can just continually, incrementally increase those service span during, during the weekdays. That'll again distribute some of that, some of that capacity. And then continue to improve the booking process and continue to work on reducing those subscription trips to get them into that target 60 to 65% range. And as my throat kind of dries up, I'm at the end of my presentation. So well timed, and we take, take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Rigma.
Thank you, Mr. Ringma, and thank you for that summary, Manager Kidway. I wanted to mention a few things. Can you stop your screen, Cherry, please? Before we get into questions, I just wanted to do a little bit of housekeeping and recognize that being, I'm the acting chair for this week and I need a motion to accept a vice chair. I need a motion to accept Director Toth as vice chair. Motion's made and may I have a vote on that? Yes, thank you, that's accepted, so you're our vice chair now. I have Director Stanford online as the representative of Gibson's. Sorry, Director Lumley, sorry. And I want to thank you for for this report. I wanted to mention that should the public want to see the full report, that it's available online in the agenda for today's meeting. It's quite extensive and and well done and thank you for the service that you provide to the community. I also want to ask for a motion to receive all reports. And a vote on that? Thank you, all in favor? Thank you. Sorry, and I look to the directors for questions. I have Director McMahon.
I have a ton of questions, I'm hoping people have some other ones. Just a couple of just basic questions about the service. So our regular transit service is somewhat seasonal in in terms of ridership. Is that true for handy dart? And then my other question is, if we have two buses on the road most days, I assume that one of them is doing Sea Shelton, one of them is doing Gibson's?
So I can answer the first part of your question, then I'll turn the operational question over to Ahmed. So I don't think our handy dart see our handy dart service sees the seasonality that our conventional transit system uses mainly because you need to be a registered handy dart user here on the coast. So that service is providing a service mainly for locals who are registered within the system. We do make some accommodations if somebody a tourist is coming and has those needs and is already a registered handy dart user. You know, I know the team here will try to make some accommodations for that. But in general, we would see a pretty consistent ridership throughout the year on our handy dart system due to its local nature.
Thank you for the question through the chair. Yes, we try to schedule our buses ideally to have minimum travel time and and maximize the the passengers. However, there there are quite a few times that we cannot help it because if 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 a person from Half Moon Bay wants to go to Gibson for any particular procedure or whatnot, we we have to engage both buses in that way. But most of the time, we try to to program them or program the pickups and the drop offs so that one bus is extensively being used on one side, another one on the others. Thank you.
Director Inkster.
Mr. Inkster, it was interesting when you talked about the provision of additional service because you start thinking about at a certain point, you have to have more buses and more drivers. And so when you came up with the extended additional hour, I, I mean, this is your, this is what you do, but it made, that made sense to me. But at a certain point, I think you'll hit that tipping point where you where the budget increase may be large because you need additional buses and drivers based on the fact that you can't have a driver working twelve hours. So now you need two and additional buses. So that'll be interesting if it stretches into the evening or it starts more early in the morning to provide additional service, including weekends. Because there's a tipping point again where you may need additional buses, not just an extension of existing bus and driver hours. So that'll be interesting because that will be coming. The question I wanted to ask, though, was, do you have a, do you have a mapping system within your, within the office, I guess, on Mason Road that notes where the subscriptions are and or frequent users? The reason I ask is, I'm wondering if there's more users in areas that are either not serviced or under service by the existing bus service. I know there's a number of users in Sea Shelton, the inlet, that use the, that use the handy dart service. Obviously, the bus, I think, has tried to go up there, but the service use is so low that it ended up, that it ended also near the arena. So I'm wondering if, in fact, you have a system that measures that and if, in fact, then if we go to the future where there's bus services in those areas based on density and or more users along the way, whether we would see a reduction in the handy dart use? Thanks.
Thank you for the question through the chair. I think at this time, I just want to make clear that we don't have an automatic scheduling system in in our use. So our staff does it just by by manually mostly creating Excel sheets. And we 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 try to do it as efficiently as possible. So it is going to be a very useful information at the click of a button, once we have that particular software. But at this time, we do have a very good understanding of where our majority of our of our ridership and our passengers who are registered, subscription or casual, they reside and what their needs patterns are. Hope that answers your question.
And through the chair, if I could just make quick follow up comment. And and exactly on that point, Director Inkster, B C Transit, you know, we work with different systems across the province. We see a myriad of different ways that our operating companies are are scheduling, dispatching, tracking handy dart rides, which is one of the reasons for me to mention that our operations team right now is looking at potentially procuring a software solution that we can roll out across the province to help support our our local operating companies to to be able to not only schedule more efficiently, but also get the data and the analytics that that we can really use to to really see where the hotspots, the key pinch points are within the system. So more to come on that. I don't have a definitive timeline, but I know they are working on that as as we kind of sit here.
Thank you, I see Jim Gangion has some words for us.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted the opportunity to add, it is interesting because I'm not sure we really understand the latent demand. And that's what I would suggest is, we got a lot of feedback from people that are currently riding the system. And although we tried through our public engagement to involve agencies, people, regular, you know, individuals, residents in our information, people tend to chime in when they understand and have a vested interest. So this, for me, was a great way to raise the profile of custom transit of our handy dart service. We're in front of you in a public forum, we haven't really talked custom transit at length before. So I think we're going to raise the profile of it. I think when we start extending the hours, it'll be raised even more. We did talk, we did hear at our public engagement interest in more promotion of the the service. We're in a little bit of a catch twenty two because to promote, we don't really have capacity right now. So I think we'd, we wouldn't be doing anybody a favor. However, this five hundred fifty hours was very much a stopgap. It came for, it came forward over a year ago to you as an interim measure until we did this review. And so we, you know, to Director Inkster's point, you might see something quite different come forward in this next round of tips that begins to, pun intended, tip the scales into expansion of service. And we might see that we have riders that we just haven't been able to serve, that haven't really engaged with us yet. So that's the piece we don't really know, I would suggest. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Director Gabias.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Manager Ringma, for coming all the way from Victoria to give us this presentation. It was very good and the report was very good. Thank you, staff, for all the consultation you did with the community. This is very helpful to us on the board. One comment and one question. This would be a really good, in the future, we have an accessibility committee now. That would be an awesome resource to tap into. And my question is, given that there's a really high demand and it's hard to, hard to keep up and that more than half of the trips are ambulatory, do these trips require the type of vehicle that we use at the moment, like those handy dart buses?
Thank you for the question through the chair. Most of the time, when these, when our passengers are coming in and and we need to have a particular type of bus. So to answer your question, yes, we, this is a common type of bus we use because it it makes our cost much, much more efficient because rather than having two different types of buses for those two, two types of passengers. So this is much more efficient. It has a seating capacity and it has also a capacity to accommodate people with mobility aid. So that is, that's the answer I would provide to you. Hope that answers.
Thank you. Sorry, I could provide one additional comment to that as well. Just on the ambulatory front, what what it does show, and I don't think I put the stat in the, in the, in the report, but one of the, one of the other stats was a lot of our handy dart riders have never ridden conventional transit. So there's an opportunity for us to do some travel training in the community with with seniors groups. We have invested, B C Transit's invested a lot in our fleet. We have wheelchair ramps that deploy on the conventional transit system on every single bus. Those buses kneel down at the curb, where there is a curb. And we have wheelchair spots, accessible seating available on our conventional transit system. So I think when we see the number of ambulatory, so people who do not have a mobility aid, there's probably an opportunity in there to do some travel training, help them understand the capabilities of the conventional transit system. And maybe when they can get a ride on handy dart, the conventional transit system is an option for them at at a certain time. So just another piece that we have discussed is, is in GM, Shelley mentioned it, is just a little bit more marketing and training about about the different of options, transit options that are out there in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Ringma. And I imagine the travel training is going to be your frontline workers, your drivers, et cetera. Another nod to the hard work that they do. A follow up question?
Sorry, just to clarify, thank you so much for those answers. I would, and I feel I should have clarified, I'm not suggesting that they go on the traditional bus, although I appreciate the the education part. More like, do we, could we use a smaller vehicle? Does that exist out there? Is there, are there other places that utilize vans or a different kind of vehicle?
Yeah, and through the chair. We, you know, B C Transit tries to efficiently procure fleet resources for the province. It does sometimes, you know, for from Ahmed's perspective, we tell him what type of bus he's going to have to operate. We like to think that our fleet team does a really good job of trying to find, exactly as Ahmed had mentioned, that that middle ground bus that can accommodate wheelchairs, that can accommodate other passengers, has the restraints that we need. You know, to be quite honest, the, based on the ridership and the ridership levels and the lack of capacity that we have, I'd be hesitant to go to a smaller vehicle within the system at this time.
Thank you, I'm going to go to Director, sorry, Director Stanford, you haven't asked a question yet.
Thank you, Chair, and it's more a comment and it's following up with what Director Gabias was talking about. Is another change potentially in use is in Gibson's, the taxi service is being reduced in the evenings. And I think people that are used to using taxi service may be looking at handy dart as an alternative going forward because of this reduction in that particular service.
Thank you, I'm going to look to Director McMahon. Oh, sorry, Director Lee, you have your hand up.
I'm not on any of the services, but I hope to be in the future. So I thought maybe it's a learning opportunity for me here. I did think that we could use handy dart in place of a regular transit, but I've learned that that's not an option. And then looking at the price, I can sure see why it's not an option. But I have a question about the price. It said in here that conventional was nine dollars a ride and the handy dart's around sixty. I was curious what the taxpayer's share would be of that versus what the user pays, what the government subsidizes. It's, you know, just approximate.
Yeah, through the chair, I can, I can take a stab at that, Director Lee. So those would be all in costs, that's not inclusive of obviously the revenue. So if somebody pays a fare, that would come off that cost, that's total cost. That total cost is cost shared through a funding formula between the province and the S C R D. On the handy dart side of things, it's more of a sixty forty, so sixty, I'm using approximate numbers. Sixty percent provincially funded, forty percent funded by the S C R D. On the conventional transit side, it's it's a different ratio, more closer to fifty fifty.
So conventional buses, we charge people to use them. I'm not sure what the average is, is it a dollar or something, two fifty or some darn thing? Two dollars, yeah. Do we charge anything for a handy dart ride? Two dollars. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Lee, I've, I've taken the bus recently and it's two dollars. Director McMahon.
Hi, yeah, I also am really interested in the question of unmet demand. Do we track how many people, how many applications are never completed because people find out partway through that they are ineligible for the service for various reasons or that they're outside of the geographical boundaries? Because that would help us to get an idea of of who's not being served. And I'm also concerned about the size of the buses because I have heard anecdotally that properties where the bus cannot cannot navigate the driveway are ineligible for service and those are big buses. So I'm wondering what would be a solution?
Maybe I'll address part of the question through the chair if I could, and then I'm sure Ahmed has has a comment. Just in terms of the the buses, one of the, yes, the the number one step when somebody, so before we, before we move to custom registration and eligibility of a client, Ahmed and his team would do a safety check on the property. That's kind of part of the the natural process and make sure that the location is safe to not only access, but to navigate. One of the other challenges that we do have sometimes is developers building different complexes or neighborhoods or subdivisions that didn't engage transit ahead of time to allow us to provide some of our infrastructure specifications that would mitigate some of the challenges that that we have seen in certain areas with with the fleet. But yes, I would say, Director McMahon, you know, there there have been circumstances where our vehicles are not able to access different clients. We try to work with them to find alternative arrangements whenever we can to to be able to provide the service. But yes, it is, it is noted. You know, I think from a fleet perspective, we're always analyzing what the next set of buses that we're going to procure will look like. And obviously, feedback from from different engagements like this always gets fed into that into that process.
Go ahead. Thank you, Chair. Just to give you additional information, as far as the boundary, boundaries confirmation is concerned, the applicants will receive within five to seven business days their information if they are outside the boundaries. And if their application is not proceeding forward, they will get a call and and an explanation that this is the reason why we are not going to proceed with the application. And after that, as Rob says, we go through the safety inspection once that is satisfied. Thank you.
A follow up.
Right, so do you track how many of these uncompleted applications there are?
Yes, yes, we do.
Before I get to Director Lumley, I just wanted to say that it looks like what the directors are asking is that we, we have an opportunity here, we're, you're looking at at adding another bus to our fleet. And we have an opportunity to diversify that that fleet and to to actually change, to get a different style of bus. And I was wondering if that is something that's being considered?
So I would, I would, I would say there's a lack of flexibility in the type of bus that you'd be able to acquire. You would, you would be procuring, or B C Transit would be procuring a bus that fits our fleet standards. So, yeah, there is a lot, at this current time, there's a lack of flexibility in the bus that you would be able to procure here on the coast. It would be our standard handy dart fleet.
That's, that makes it clear. Thank you. Director Lumley.
Thank you, Chair.
Director Lumley, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay. Maybe just to follow up on a couple of comments by a couple of other directors, I just wondered, as a 60% bidder, if there's a more of a detailed breakdown, part of the fear might be that you're going to increase a service or an increase your cost for a specific, like say a peak time. You know, the extra costs that are going to go into servicing people at a peak time, is there going to be like possibly operational changes that might be able to accommodate some of these extra costs? I'm, I'm just wondering about how much money this will cost. I know you said our average cost per ride is well below, say, some other communities. Is this going to bump us up into, into a higher average cost per ride?
Yeah, through the, through the chair. Thank you for the question, Director Lumley. Yes, so obviously if we invest in another vehicle within the system, there'll be added lease fees for that vehicle. Labor is one of the major cost drivers from a transit perspective, so we'd have to add another driver. I, I mentioned it slightly in my one slide. What would likely happen is, yes, our cost per ride, if we added in those resources, would immediately increase. But as we can take on more, more capacity within the system, again, that capacity at $2 a ride drives some revenue, and we would see it readjust as the ridership would increase. But net-net, it would be, it would be an investment. And just for clarity on how that process works, we'll take the feedback from the board, we'll work with staff through the next round of our transit improvement process, and we'll come back with some fully costed options for the board to, to consider. And so I think, you know, leading down that road, I think just with some conversation with staff, we're already going to likely look at what it would cost to add an additional bus and driver into the system, and we'll bring that back to the board for, for deliberation.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Director, oh, sorry. Oh, Staffer, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, just real quickly, this is like, as with other transit, I've, I've seen the HandyDart buses around. There doesn't seem to be any advertising on them. Is there any aspect of funding through advertising option on these buses?
Through the chair, thank you for your question, Director Lumley. Yeah, you know what? We do, so one of the things I should have mentioned on the costs slide of things is that the SCRD retains 100% of the revenue, the fair revenue, on both the HandyDart system and the conventional transit system. Basically, you use that revenue to lower your portion of the cost of, of the system. Also included in that is any marketing revenue that we, that we utilize on the buses. So our conventional transit buses, we have a contract with Lamar. They contract out bus advertising, and the SCRD would get a portion of that revenue from that marketing. But I do not believe we do the same advertising on our HandyDart vehicles, so I will follow up on that for you. We do do it on conventional. I do not believe we do it on, on HandyDart service, and that may be another opportunity for, for additional revenue to, to offset costs.
Thank you. I think it'd be a good place for focused advertising.
Absolutely.
Director McMahon.
Sure, we could see more real estate ads on the back of the bus. That would be cool. I'm really interested in the travel training program because I think this is a really good opportunity to, I'm always surprised by how many people, especially seniors, have never taken the bus. And a lot of people, it's, it's funny, they, they move from different cultures. And where I come from, BMW stands for break my window, but I was talking for somebody from Montreal, and he said it stands for bike walk metro. And yeah, and I, so there are people who come here who are familiar with transit, but there's lots of opportunities to maybe get some of these, reduce our demand at peak hours by getting folks on conventional transit. I noticed there was a suggestion by one of the participants that we should explore how other communities add in private operators to assist with capacity at peak times. And this is another area I think that we should explore. I'm, I'm sure Staff are familiar with the getting their society that have been trying to acquire a van. And there's a lot of interest in the community. I've been told that the adult program in Gibson's is about to expand, Adult Day program. So demand is not going away, and the recent, it was the Ice-T-funded Study on Regional Transportation, said that we should be looking for partnerships between nonprofit groups and companies and the government to, to fill these gaps that we have, these, these difficult to fill in a rural area gap. So is there a possibility, I should ask, for, for travel training sometime, sooner rather than later?
Yeah, thank you, Director, through the chair. Yes, I think we, it became very evident through this process, which is why it's great to go through these public, these public processes, that, that travel training is an opportunity. BC Transit does have a set travel training program that we could, you know, increase our utilization here on the coast. I, I think one of the points that was made by, by Shelley, you know, was about just marketing, how do we, how do we market that, and how do we set up that program? And that'll take us working with the SCRD to develop a bit more of a robust program, and then actually advertising that program so that we can, we can get that service out to more users. And, and I agree, I think, you know, the more we can promote transit and remove some of the maybe misconceptions or barriers to transit is always an opportunity to get, to get more ridership and, and actually distribute some of that ridership a little more across the spectrum of services that we offer.
Thank you. General Manager Gagnon, I'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, Chair. So a couple of points, if I may. Certainly, if the board wants to look at their strategic priorities and look at options to expand the service through private, the private sector, that's within your purview. At this current point in time, that certainly is not something that we're reviewing because it hasn't been identified in, in the priorities. So I just wanted to note that. But of course, they're your priorities. Secondly, I, I would suggest that the intent of this customer review is to do exactly what you're talking about, is to inform the future. So we have some work to do between now and when we start to bring back TIPS, which is a transit improvement program, about what, what priorities came out of this review, what does that mean from our service, and what do we want to look at for 2025 and onward? And so, you know, training and resources to actually provide that training, those are all things that we'll be considering over the next few months as we then come back to reengage with the board around transit improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, GM Gagnon. As Director McMahon said, this is, this is a demand that's not going away. We have a, an older demographic on the Sunshine Coast that's just getting older. And it's, this is a vital service that we offer to the people that, that need it. And if there are no other questions, I'm going to thank the delegation and move on to the next item as Annex B. Valerie Crop, Manager of Purchasing and Risk Management. Sorry, it's not that. Oh, the staff report.
Yep.
Sorry. I seem to have missed something. Oh, sorry, Annex A, on page three, there is a staff report on the HandyDart custom transit. Would you like to introduce that, Director Gagnon?
Thank you, Chair. No, I don't think I need to introduce it. I just wanted to make sure that we address the recommendations that are in there and whether or not they are to, if someone wants to move them. Thank you.
All right. I'm looking for, I have a mover, and do I have a second? I have a seconder. Do we have questions on this motion? Director McMahon, thank you.
Yeah, I have a tangential question, sorry. Do we ever partner with special events or groups to provide HandyDart service? I mean, for instance, if they wanted the geriatric Rocky Horror Picture Show, could, could they lease the HandyDart buses to get the participants there? Just curious.
Thank you for the question, the loaded question. No, we do not, would be the simple answer, and there's a number of reasons that we don't, that are beyond just the fact that we don't actually own the vehicles ourselves, right? They're BC Transit's. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's, Geriatric Rocky Horror Picture Show is really something that's coming down the pipe. So if I have no other questions on the recommendations that appear on page three, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed, that passes. Thank you. We're going to move on to Staff Report on Procurement Policy Update. Manager Crop, thank you.
Thank you. As mentioned in the report, there are two key updates to this policy. One is aligning our dollar values with trade agreement thresholds, allowing us to reduce administrative overhead, and as well as provide more flexibility to support local economy development. The other update is to, is for us to address our award report practices to align with case law, legal recommendations, and Section 21 of FIPA. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before we begin with questions, I just want to thank Staff for, I was involved in the review of this agenda, and I asked for the, the changes to be highlighted, and they are highlighted in the agenda, if, if the public cares to look at that. And, and it really makes our job so much easier. Thank you very much. I'm going to go to Director McMahon.
Yeah, and I will apologize profusely because usually when I find a typo, I like to warn people in advance. But I was away yesterday. 4.20B, the sentence doesn't work. I think there is an extra A in there. The extension is a permitted using a sole source. So, 73. I'm just checking through quickly. But mostly, this seemed very sensible and straightforward. So, thank you.
I have that highlighted as well, and if we strike the letter A in front of permitted, I believe that will fix the problem. Okay, thank you. Any other, oh, I'm looking at Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Looking at 4.15 on page 72, adding the, I seem to recall it was last term that we added the requirement that the other vendors were listed with the cost of their bid, recognizing that the cost of the bid is not always the primary factor that determines who actually gets the award. But it, from, from a board perspective, it was about increasing transparency around the process and just helping to educate the board on what the other options looked like. So I'd, I'd like a little more information on why the recommendation here is to, to strike that clause that we put in last term. Thank you.
Go ahead. Manager Crop?
Thank you for the question. So there, there's several things that do recommend the removal of it. We did adopt this, and after, about a year after we actually adopted this, we went to a webinar where there was legal representations that very clearly stated, do not do this fact by posting those. What it does, it has the potential of hindering the competitive edge that companies will have. So if we post those dollar values in award report and we cancel that, where we do not go with the recommendation to award, and then we go back out to the market, six months, eight months, a year later, whatever, it impacts the ability, everybody knows what everybody's pricing is. And so that's where like Section 21 of FIPA comes in line too, where it actually states that you have to protect their competitive edge, or, so it says actually protect their competitive position to harm a third party in the bid. So that's where the exposures come from, and that's where the case laws talk about in those examples as well, is because we are putting it out there and impacting their ability to bid again, or other, or other company, in other jurisdictions too, right? If they read it, they see what they bid and things like that. Thank you.
Follow-up from Director Toth, please.
Thank you. Okay, so recognizing that we probably shouldn't be putting the dollar values on the public agenda for the other bidders, does that still, does that same provision extend to like aggregated scores through the analysis of bids? Or is there a risk if a bid was purely on price that we're still doing the same thing?
I'm wondering if our CAO, oh, I need first to you, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just clarify what you mean by aggregated scores? Are you talking about when we score a solicitation and we give them dollar, like numbers that say they scored 89 to 79?
Yeah.
So we don't actually release those scores either, because it, when we do our debriefs with our vendors, we release their scores only. We never talk about, it's actually a, a, that goes against practice and as well as the guidance from local government to disclose those type of scores. Because again, it can impact their competitive advantages.
CAO McKinley?
Yes, thank you. The only thing I'd, I'd add really is the other, the other challenge around printing only the bid totals is that the dollar amount is one of many factors that are considered. And the factor, the weighting it's given changes from procurement to procurement. And one of the things that separates, I guess, the Sunshine Coast Regional District from certainly the other local governments on the Sunshine Coast, but many other local governments, is we actually have a procurement department that has a registered procurement professional in it. So we, we have the benefit of having professional procurement staff available to you and a procurement policy that is a board policy. But yeah, the, when, when the public sees in a report a bidder's name and just a price, they have no idea why a price that was lower is ranked lower than a price that was higher, because there were 17 other considerations in that particular one that led to the recommendation.
Director Toth has another follow-up.
Thank you. I just wanted to emphasize, like, I, I fully trust our staff to do their jobs, and I think the rest of the board does too. The, two of the three or four last award reports, the recommendations for award were actually not the lowest bidder based on the report that was in front of us. So we still go with the staff recommendations. I just look at it from a transparency to the public perspective. So, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that, that seems to be the issue at hand. But I'm going to go to Director McMahon, who has a question.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm fine with the recommendations as presented by staff, but I, I just wonder if there is some way for the board to get some more information on, maybe on an annual basis about how procurement is, is going and how our social procurement is going, and not, you know, probably, that, that would address some of the concerns that were raised when this policy was changed back in the day, but doesn't involve putting amounts on public agendas. So I'm just, I'm throwing it out there. I don't know what other local governments do in that regard. I keep getting the social procurement newsletter, and it's interesting, but I have no idea what to do with it. So.
Director McMahon, did I hear a motion?
Oh, if you would like, I could move the recommendations on page 66.
Do I have a seconder? Yes, I have a seconder. Have more questions? Director Gabias?
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking at the increase in public procurement threshold. Could you explain to me, as if I'm a seven-year-old, what that means? Like what, what are the implications of that? I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So trade agreements set thresholds when we have to publicly procure and post. So that, that builds into our transparency and things like that too, right? The lowest threshold trade agreement we have is 75,000. So under those thresholds, we have more flexibility to work with local vendors, build our local economy. thresholds, we have more flexibility to work with local vendors, build our local economy, build in more of those social factors and things like that, that you guys have asked for us to do. So that will allow us to do those things as well. It's a lot less administrative time. So when we go out, anything over seventy-five thousand, trade agreement thresholds apply. There's certain rules that we have to do. We can't specify local vendors or any of those type of options when those apply. And they go up, there's three that mainly apply to us, and they go up from seventy-five to two-hundred-and-thirty-ish. They change annually. So aligning our policy with those thresholds will give us more opportunities to work, again, with our local vendors, so we can go out and work with, we can pick two local vendors and get direct quotations from them or solicitations from them. It just allows us more options to focus more locally.
Sure, follow.
Because I'm interested now. And so does that mean that an RFP would have to go as it does if it's above seventy-five thousand, or it's a different process completely?
Thank you for the question. So anything below seventy-five thousand, we will, we have a small purchasing guideline that will address certain things. So there's, we would ask them to do the quotes. So it's a much simpler process. So we, it's called an informal process. So anything under seventy-five thousand, we would do informal processes. And that could be any type of solicitation. It could be a quote, it could be a request for proposal, an invitation to tender. Anything over seventy-five, that's when it goes to the market. Does that?
I have a question about the last time that this was updated, and with the increasing costs of everything, that this update is in line with that increasing cost. Can you, do you know when the last time this particular guideline, these thresholds were updated?
Thank you for the question. Two of the trade agreements, the ones that have the higher dollar value, which is the CETA and the Canadian European Union one, CETA, sorry, CETA's all of Canada, sorry, they fluctuate every year, so they're adjusted for CPI increases and all that stuff. The new West Trade Agreement, which is basically like Manitoba to B C provinces, that has not changed. It's been seventy-five thousand since the creation of the New West and its successor, which was TILMA, trade agreement, and has not changed since I've been doing public procurement, which has been like since two thousand and seven. So that, there is a big movement that a lot of procurement professionals are working with the provinces to try to get them to raise that amount to allow for more flexibility, but we're not there yet.
All right. Thank you for this presentation. I have a motion on the floor. Any more questions? No? All in favor? Any opposed? Would you like that recorded? Record the thing? Sorry, motion carries, and we are going to move on to staff report, Sunshine Coast Regional District Water Strategy. Oh, certainly. I've been asked for a five-minute break. We're going to return at ten forty-five, a six-minute break. Welcome back to the committee of the whole meeting, and we are now on Annex C on page seventy-eight of the agenda, the Sunshine Coast Regional District Water Strategy. And I am going to look to staff to introduce that.
Thank you, Chair. It's my pleasure to be here today together with our strategic planning coordinator, Chair Rempel, to present to you today the water strategy for adoption. The water strategy has been in development for several years now, and it's currently brought forward to you, and it aligns with the board's strategic plan as well as with the shared values and vision that the board discussed with the nation and other local governments, the CISA nation and other local governments on the coast. So we had to wait for some of those pieces to be completed before bringing this back to you for your consideration. And as an introduction, I actually prepared a couple of slides to help you through this.
Go ahead.
This document. So I'm going to share my screen with you. There we are. Let me see if it actually works. Yes. So the water strategy is a drinking water management plan. It is the plan for, the strategic plan that outlines how we are managing our water services on the coast. Did we ever have a plan like this before? No. We had a comprehensive regional water plan, which was focused on the regional water system. We had separate plans for North and South Bender, but we never had a strategic plan actually that outlines the objectives and the intent and the priorities for the coast, for all the water systems we were having. So it's really the first time that we're doing this. And the intent is that it's really, it brings direction and guidance on operations and further planning of the water services, but it also is a good document for the community to know what we're actually aiming for. What are we doing and why are we doing what we're doing? And I think it has been recognized several times by the board before in several settings that there's a need for having a long-term strategic document related to water, and that's what this is. We started the project by the end of twenty-twenty-one, up until twenty-two. We did a lot of public engagement, community surveys, open houses, online, in person. We had meetings with all kinds of sectors. This is a picture of an open house we had in CISA Center at the time. It's interesting to see how the time changes in terms of masks, et cetera, et cetera, but I'm glad that we're two years further than we were then with that respect. And it was active engagement with our water supply advisory committee. WAC has been reviewing this document in several stages, and yeah, so they were heavily engaged as well. And we incorporated all that feedback we received in the document that's presented to you today. So the framework is that we have developed a commitment statement. The Sunshine Coast, the S R D, is committed to providing a safe and reliable water supply. That's what we're here to do. That's why we have the services, the water services that we have. We decided to have five guiding principles. One is action-oriented. It's not only strategic plan, but we need to act. It's partnership-based. Partners with other local governments, with nations, with stakeholders is a key element. Anything we do needs to be resilient. It needs to be long-term proof. It needs to be resilient towards climate change and other factors that might change over time, growth. It needs to be cost-effective, and we need to think and act like a region. We cannot address the water situation, all the water challenges we have, S A S R D on its own. We need to work together. We need to think and act like a region, and I think this, the water segments for me are a good example of that. But also the agreement we have with the town of Gibson's, as well as the current collaboration with the nation, for example, in Lower Crown, is really thinking and acting like a region. It doesn't matter whose, other parties can also take the lead on the construction of a water source and then hand it over to the S R D. It's like, we need to work together. So we developed four strategic priorities. One is water supply, addressing water supply issues. The second one is water infrastructure, that is managing our current infrastructure. And I think the board is very aware of all the challenges we're having with our aging infrastructure, and the capital plants that were presented to the board last year around that, but also the fire flow situation we're having, et cetera, et cetera. The other one is, of course, water efficiency, water conservation, water efficiency, water metering, and the fourth pillar is source water protection. So in total, we identified thirty-eight actions over those four priorities. How do they relate together, and how do we actually get to actions? Because the water strategy document itself has actions included in them, but there's a lot of work required before we can actually implement a lot of those actions. So the strategic priorities are listed here, and there's a lot of technical studies. Some are being completed as we speak, some have been completed, and ultimately, we're going to present to you three action plans that actually include timelines, budget considerations, other implementation considerations like permitting and other, now they relate to each other. One is everything related to our infrastructure. Those are our water master plans. They outline all the infrastructure upgrades that might be required in the next five to ten years, including financial implications and any other implications that are required to actually construct that infrastructure. Then there's water efficiency plan, and we have a water protection plan, water source water protection plan identified as a plan that needs to be developed. So the purpose of those plans is really to focus on the actions. Really, it's an implementation plan, and one of the deficiencies that we identified with the comprehensive water plan that was presented in twenty thirteen, it had a lot of technical analysis, it had a lot of cost estimates, but it didn't address when is what actually going to be done, when is what going to be presented to the board. So the purpose of this is really to present, of the action plans is really to be, to be, clearly outline the actions that will be taken to achieve the strategic direction that is included in this water strategy. And staff are here to answer any questions you might have on the strategy itself. Thank you.
Thank you, GM Rosenbaum. I'm looking to my directors to see if there are any questions on this. I have Director Gabias.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, staff, for this water strategy, for this document. I love a high-level document. It's so nice to see. I have, and understanding that there is a lot more information coming down in this year and next, I'm wondering if you could give me a little bit more information about, on page eighty, with that nice graph that you have there, watershed business case. Could you give me like in broad strokes what that entails?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The Board in a previous configuration received this report already and we can redistribute it to the Board so that they are aware of what the document includes and not.
Sorry, Director Stanford.
I also really appreciate this document. It's that big picture that helps us communicate out how we're going forward. This is more of a comment, if this is our public-facing document, a lot of words that are comments that include plan in them. And I know that there has been a criticism from the community about we're planning and planning and are we doing anything? I want to acknowledge that we actually are in the midst of this strategy. We are doing these goals. It's just, this is the plan that provides a structure and wording for what we're doing. So, we're not just doing it blindly. This demonstrates this is where we're going. This is why we're going in the direction we are. So, yeah, I really commend that this is a great starting point, although we are in the middle of the starting point. So, thank you.
Thank you Director Stanford. This is absolutely something that we can point our constituents to and say, this is what is happening. Okay. Director Lee. Oh, sorry. GM Rosenbaum.
Thank you. Maybe as a follow-up on that, we are planning after, if the Board adopts this plan, the plan, our plan, our intent is to make this actually, format this nicely and then publish it early May with a news release, et cetera, et cetera. So, it won't be published as is right now. It will be in to a nice shiny format, just like the strategic plan from the Board is. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice shiny report. Director Lee, you have a question?
Yes, I did, but I think I managed to ask, to answer my own question by going down and reading the report.
All right, well, I'll move on then to Director Lumley.
Thank you Chair. I just wondered, I mean, and the report's great, this is awesome, keep going in this direction. Is, the one thing, I was reading last night about, I don't know if anyone else saw that, but Mexico City, they don't have water. There are like pretty medium to higher income people that are getting water trucked into their homes. And the, when I was, when I was reading about their lack of water, the two of the top things are obviously the climate change, which we can't control, I guess we can in certain ways, but, and the other thing is growth. So, one of the big factors for that area of the world was that just unimpeded growth without any thought, like just hey, we're just going to keep growing, isn't this great? Without the kind of recognition that, okay, you know, we were already at a certain level of restrictions on water. We try and restrict it throughout the year, we try and find new water, but it's eventually like, like we just can't make up water anymore. I just wonder if growth, I mean, it has to be on the back of your mind, it has to form part of the strategy, but I just wonder if growth is going to increase, like development? And I know in the report, it's about finding more efficient ways of water use or less water waste through development, but I wonder if that's like even a bigger picture item now than it ever was before?
Yeah, thank you, Alternate Director Lumley. I think what he's, what we're getting at is that how is the whole of the regional district government working hand-in-hand with the different departments in order to create an infrastructure that works for everyone, including the planning department, the building department, the infrastructure department, all of it?
Thank you for the question. Growth is, the impact of growth on the water supply is definitely part of, part of the analysis and the work that we're considering, that we're undertaking. As earlier identified by Directors, a lot of this work is already underway and a lot of work still has to be done. One of the things that we're actually working on in conjunction with our planning department is how to integrate this strategy with the OCP project and potentially with other OCPs that are being developed on the coast. Because there are intricacies, intricacies here in terms of water supply, but also in the development of infrastructure, in prioritizing where areas where fire flow deficiencies might be, need to be addressed earlier than others, areas where water infrastructure might need to be upgraded to accommodate growth more than in other areas. So, all those kinds of relationships are being explored and worked on as part of the OCP project. So, this is a water service strategic plan, but in the implementation of the actions, there is definitely a strong connection with the planning work that's currently underway, the long-range planning there. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. Director McMahon.
Yes, and it is a good fit with the OCP renewal process, although I think this is the sixth topic that I've heard of lately that we're going to bundle in with the OCPs, which is starting to make me feel just a tad nervous. This is going to be like the mega OCP blast. I like this, this strategy. It's the overall big picture thing that we need. The only word I didn't see in there that I kind of wanted to see was redundancy. And it's just a comment because we need redundancy in our system. Well, you know why we need redundancy in our system. I'm not sure that everybody in the public knows the, knows the meaning of redundancy, but that's in order to be robust and to survive future whatever happens. The more diversity and redundancy we've got, the better position we are in. Otherwise, I actually didn't have any nits to pick, I'm sorry. I usually do. I appreciated the note about the high cost per capita of our system here because people don't get that and it's really important to remind them. Thank you.
I like that, no nits to pick. And I was looking around and going, well, who's, who are the big picture people? And I guess it's us here at the Board. I'm going to go to Director Inkster and I'm going to ask eventually for someone to make a motion.
Okay, not me. Yeah. You did, you used that to success earlier, but it won't work on me. Just, just some thoughts and just one worry here. It's interesting to hear the story about, we, a number of us listened to the news, we heard this, what Director Lumley said about Mexico City. I think historically, we know that the original Aztec Empire was actually on an island. So, that whole area was water. So, that's, that tells us some stories about how much water humans consume. So, we just got to keep that in mind because it was all water and cenotes in that area, in large parts of Mexico. So, that's a, that's a bad sign. And the other thing is the, you know, you talk about, is the RD doing anything? And it's a little simplistic, but if you want to know, just turn on your tap. We used to talk about sewage treatment in Seashell days, can you flush your toilet? That's what we used to do before Councilor Toth was there. That's how many toilets can you flush? And that was a sewage treatment discussion, successfully flushing toilets. It's how many successfully can you turn on your tap here? But, but we're still the Sunshine Coast and I'm hoping that Director Rosenbaum always updates us about this, is how still, how high of individual users we are of water, despite the fact that many people complain that we don't, they foresee that we won't have water, yet we have maybe some of those same people being high users of water that we don't, they say have a lot of. My only concern, my, one of my concerns when I look at the list that was presented, and thanks for these, these lists and the updates that go with them, is the numbers of projects. And I always flag this and have concerns about is the number of projects not started or partially completed. And the fire, the fire issue, the fire hydrant issue was, was something that we asked the water department to take a close look at, and they did, and it's appreciated, but we know that that causes capacity issues in other areas and it may have led to projects either partially completed or not started. So, I'm always concerned about capacity and government, our ability to complete projects within a reasonable timeframe. So, thank you Chair.
I didn't hear a question in there, but...
That sort of was a question.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you clarify your question?
Sure. It's through you to, to Director Rosenbaum. When, when I look at the list of not-starteds or completed, is that just that there, it's planned to be started soon or is it, as I said, a capacity issue? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. The action plans itself, I think we'll have a lot of the actions, a lot of the project and we'll go more in detail in terms of what are, what has already started of this work and whatnot. Because a lot of, especially on the water efficiency plan side, a lot of work is already started or has been initiated or is waiting for some dependencies to move ahead on. So, I don't think a lot of the projects that are, if you look at the BPSR, the Project Status Report that will be discussed later today, a lot of the projects that are not started or to be started are within the Capital Projects Division and not as much as staff that are working on this, this work. So, I think on the water infrastructure side of the house and the water supply side of the house, I think that's where the more staff and concerns are at the moment and less on the water efficiency plan side of the house. And on the water efficiency plan, the plan is in final stages of being drafted. So, we hope to get it to you within the next two months as well, which would actually be great news because it would really indicate also towards the community that water efficiency is really important for us, besides water, water supply strategy, what a lot, as focus has been on for the last several years as well, is like the well field developments, et cetera. But water efficiency, there's so much we can do and there's so much that we are doing to help the community in reducing less water. And on that note about how much water actually residents are using, recently I was, we got another, we came into a situation where we had another, in South Pender, there were 6% of the users, 43 users, were using 36% of the water supply last year, August. And those numbers, those numbers are staggering and they're not unique in this case of South Pender, but similar numbers can be presented for Chapman. So, water efficiency, the high use of a certain amount of people is significant. And the water efficiency plan includes some of the actions, some of the actions, how to address those kinds of issues. But especially if we move towards the summer and if it's happened to be a dry summer, that's really where our focus needs to be. And I think the efficiency plan that is, will be brought forward, will provide some general actions on how to address that.
Thank you for your answer. A really big, big challenge. Director Lee hasn't asked a question at the moment. I will ask Director Lee to chime in.
Thank you. I was trying to just figure out where the, the devil's always in the details. For instance, when you talk about water supply, perhaps you do talk about the ability for emergency recovery, like I'm thinking I'd like to have North Pender tied to South Pender so if South Pender fails, either one we can, but I'm sure the regional water is looking for the same thing. So, my question kind of was, where would we see those details? And when would we see those details? Because it's, I'm not sure the right analogy, I'm not going to use it. It's, when you read a one-liner, a lot of the interpretations in the mind of the reader and we assign things to it that could easily be incorrect. So, at some point, we need examples and details. When would we be getting those kinds of things?
Thank you for the question. The devil's usually in the details. So, I think the action plans will have some of the details in them. And early on, there was the question about redundancy and I think this speaks to the same thing. One of the actions identified on page 89 of the, of the document of the Agenda package, the last action item is review and update emergency response plans, contingency plans and assess readiness to respond. And I think that's where a lot of this work is, sits. One of the documents that is currently being prepared, it's more an operational plan. It is 100% an operational plan, but we're, since the drought of 2020, we've been working on a water scarcity plan that really is an emergency response plan to drought scenarios that includes almost procedures for how to get bottled water here, et cetera, et cetera. It's a really detailed oriented. So, in the, and a lot of the details that you're asking for, including list of suppliers that we can use, et cetera, et cetera, are in those plans. So, those plans were outlined for each of the water systems, what are the options, what are the, what are the risks? And in way more detail, how can we ensure that water supply is guaranteed as much as possible to resident officers in certain area if something were to happen?
So, the way I'm thinking of this, I did, I did read those when I said, hey, I answered my own question, but I, then I realized I didn't quite because, yeah, we need to do all these actions, but the next question is of course, when? So...
Thank you. I see Director McMahon has your hand, has your hand up?
Yes, I was really happy to see that we are going to update this every five years. And I think that's one of the advantage of breaking this big monster into bite-sized chunks so that we can keep the chunks up to date. Because when we roll everything into one horrendous master plan, then updating it becomes just a huge hassle. So, I think that's great. And I'm going to go wild and move the recommendations on page 78.
I see a seconder for that. And do we have any more questions? Before we call the question, I just, I want to say that I'm really appreciative of this document and I think it's something, given the time challenges that we all have, I haven't been able to, to dig into it in depth as much as I would like to, but it will be something that I'll be coming back to in times. Director Lee has something to say?
Yes, I'm just about finished, but I didn't get, actually get an answer to my last question. And that is, each one of those actions under the objectives are essentially, I would say, projects. And they're not really, they're planning projects, I guess. And when would those occur? When would we know the timeline for them happening?
Thank you for the question. It's a return, not answer it right away. The action plan, for example, the water efficiency action plan will include timelines of what is already underway, how do they, actions relate to each other and what are potential dependencies for moving forward. So, the water efficiency plan that's currently being developed will have timelines for actions and for initiation and completion of the, of the actions. Thank you.
Thank you. As Director McMahon says, the only way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time. And I will call, okay, or a monster, you can eat a monster one bite at a time. I will call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, I call... Seeing none, I call, I, the motion passes, passes. We're going to move on now to the budget project status report. And I look to CIO McKinley to introduce that.
Thank you, staff, for standing by to answer any questions the board may have on the budget project status report. And do you have any questions on this staff report that is here for our information? There is Director McMahon.
Right. I'm wrestling with giant spreadsheet on the little screen here. But item number one is the organizational review, and it says started, but I think it's almost finished, isn't it? Shouldn't, shouldn't you be giving some more credit for, for, for work almost done?
It's probably a little further along than started, but it's not finished. It was not implemented, but the review portion, the contracted portion is completed.
That's where I was unclear, because later on, there's a, there's a follow-up project on the same, on the organization thing.
Thank you, Director McMahon. I'm going to look to Director Stanford for the next question.
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking at the additional comment regarding Hopkins Landing Wharf. I see an engineer has been secured. I'm just wondering if there's any more details about what a public engagement schedule would look like. Is there anything I can do as a connection to the community to advertise that or help that along?
Thank you for your question. That's yours.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. This is Hopkins Port, right?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so we have worked through the project timelines. Right now, we're just experiencing a little bit of capacity within communications. However, we are hopeful that community engagement will be toward the end of April, beginning of May. And we'll be working on a communication strategy to inform the public and our POMO reps, and et cetera, et cetera. So there'll be some en masse communication about that. We're looking at the potential for a hybrid as well, so that folks that are on the islands that maybe want to participate can do so in a hybrid fashion. So we are just working through that right now. Thank you.
Follow-up question.
Just a request that anything that goes to the POMO representatives also goes to the board reps at the same time, because I did get caught with a notice the other day about Keats Landing updates. So just something to add to that.
Thank you, Director. Capacity of communication is something I'm going to continue to use as a, as a new tagline in the future. I'm looking, I'll look to Director Lee for a comment.
Thank you, Chair. First off, I really appreciate that most of these have been updated, and it's, it's getting pretty darn good. The thing I was wondering is, I see a lot of them have started in like 2020, 2021, not started, things like that, which then brings to mind, perhaps, perhaps it's good, perhaps it's bad. But if we're not getting some of them done, then we have to prioritize the ones that must be done. And they aren't necessarily the ones that we see as government mandated, for instance. Hell, we'll take our, we'll take our fines and get the other ones done, maybe. How do we do that as a package? And how do we move the very important ones so that we get very regular updates on what's happening, so we know exactly, and there's no surprises? Because I know, of course, we want all of them like that, and all of them documented, and all detailed timelines. We're not going to get that. But the important ones, I think we should have those kind of things. And what comes to mind here for me is we've had this safety, we've safety build on our dams forever. And it's, it was said it was the highest priority of all, and yet we slide them. So obviously, it wasn't. And yet, we're getting some that are really high priority and aren't getting done. And so perhaps we've got our resources in the wrong place. How do we look at it as a package and ensure it's all done? And is that the new project manager guy that's going to do that? That's my question.
Excuse me, Director Lee. I'm going to ask you to hold that question. We're going to take a, a small break. We have a technical issue with our recording secretary that I'd like to have resolved. So we'll take it, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. We're back here at the committee of the whole. Our technical issues have been solved, and we have a question that we had from Director Lee. We have their CIO ready with an answer.
Yes, thank you for the question through the chair. That would be in scope of the org review implementation and the work that we're doing on the corporate work plan and corporate tool development that includes better reporting tools for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. No, that's a good answer. I like that.
All right. Good. I could move on to Director McMahon.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo Director Lee's comments that a lot of these items were updated, which means I don't have to ask questions, which is really great. But I did read almost every line of this spreadsheet. Yeah, I know. It was a, it was a long day. Item three, the House Sound Forum. My memory says that we were going to host it this fall. So I was just wondering if there is any update there, and if there is anything the board can do, board members can do to help out, those of us who participate in the House Sound Forum? Because if we don't book a venue ASAP, we may not be anywhere.
I believe there was a staff lead on this graph. Is, can I get an update on that from staff member? GM Hall?
Thank you, Chair. Indeed, Manager Shay has started work on this. A lot of the logistics are actually sorted by the House Sound Forum directly, but we are working with them on this. Thanks.
Thank you, GM Hall. I believe that Director McMahon has a vested interest in seeing that this happens. So is there communication between, Director, between staff and her?
Thanks for the question. I, I can't speak to what might have been communicated so far, but if any directors have questions, they're welcome to route them through to senior management. Thanks.
Director Stanford.
Just that I would be interested in being the board liaison for the House Sound Community Forum. Not that any other board member doesn't get information, but I'm happy to be active on that with staff.
Well, that sounds like it's sorted. Director Lee, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I actually have two questions, but I'll go one at a, I'll ask them both. I don't see any more hands. The Dogwood Reservoir, it, we've been trying to decide what to do with it, and I'm, I'm guessing that we probably will know now because of the water pressure and that kind of thing. But I was just like to confirm that, or I'm curious if, if I have it right, actually.
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. Yes, the water model analysis related to fire flows indeed indicated that the water, that the Dogwood Reservoir will indeed need to be replaced, or another reservoir in that same area will need to be constructed.
Thank you, GM Rosenbaum. You have a second question?
Yes, thank you for that. It's, I'd had some inquiries about that issue, so now I have an answer that's not a guess, so that's a good one. The other one is the South Pender and Level, or Stage Three that we keep bumping into. I've now come to believe that it's most likely the issue with the heavy users of a few people. I forget what, I didn't quite write it down correct. I'd like to confirm it so that I can. But I think it's like 40 users are using 36% of the water, or something like that. And so do we have a plan to take care of those, or confirm that they're actually legitimate users, one or the other?
Thank you very much for the question, Director. All high-water users, including those on the Chapman system and other water systems, but primarily Chapman and, and South Pender, because of the issues we have with their water supply over the summer. They all will receive a letter in upcoming weeks identifying them as a high-water user and asking, making them aware. Because awareness is usually, what a literacy is step one in terms of water efficiency. If you don't know, if they don't know that they're, how much they're using, nobody, nobody, we're actually not enabling, enabling them to, to change their, their use. But there is a general communication campaign that will be launched more or less at the same time about how much water is actually used by a shower, an hour of running an irrigation system, et cetera, et cetera, so that people actually understand that if you're running an irrigation system, because I recently had a remark with somebody like, yeah, but I'm only irrigating during the hours I'm allowed to. But that's still 1,000 liters, one hour, 1,000 liters, a second hour, and that three times a week. And you're still wondering why your use is so high? Because you're irrigating at maximum capacity during the hours that you're allowed. But is it all required? So it's those kind of conversations that we need to have with the high-water users. And we have confirmed that these high-water users don't have any leaks in them. They're all residents.
I, thank you for the answer. I have a question about North-South Pender system. We've approved it to go to volumetric billing, and, and we're still, I imagine we're still working on the pricing structure for that. I'd be very interested in having an update on that, whether you have a, if you have a timeline that you can share with us, when that's going to come into place, and when volumetric billing will be introduced to these. I imagine the high-water users will pay more for the water that they're using than the average users.
Yes, thank you, Chair, for the question. Yes, and appreciate there's a lot of interest in this particular item. So part of the 2024 budget, we did provide some resource, or the board approved some resources for us to work on implementing the volumetric billing. So for the North and South Pender region systems first, so staff are currently working on that and hope to bring a project update to the board. There's multiple components associated with that. It's not just the implementation of the meter bill, that's the outcome. So we need to do multiple things ahead of that. So we will provide the board and the public with an update on, on the status of that shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, CFO. And as Director Lee mentioned earlier, there are some projects that we deem to have priority over others. And I, I don't know, I've, I can't speak for the board, but myself, I believe that this is, this is a priority project. Director Lee, you have another question? No?
Sorry, I forgot to take down my hand.
So we've received that one for, oh, Director, Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I didn't get my hand up in time there. Looking at items numbers 76 and 77 on page 106, it's Seashore Landfill Power System. It, I'm seeing that there isn't an update posted here, but it looks like there's been some survey work that's been done up Dusty Road. I'm wondering if that's related to this, or if this is to do with right-of-ways and, and what have you, part of the foundation agreement. Thanks.
Go ahead, GM Rosenbaum.
Thank you. Yeah, the work was indeed, the survey work along Dusty Road was indeed related to confirm if hydro connection could be established within the current right-of-way.
So we're moving ahead there. That's looking for...
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm looking around the room, and I don't see any other hands up. So we will move on from our budget project status report and go to our grants status Are there any questions for staff on the grants update? Director Gabias, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And I want to first start by thanking Manager Taylor for the report and for all the good work that's being done. Grants are very much appreciated, and it's a big job, so thank you very much. I do have a question, looking at the table on page 120, the Seashore Aquatic Center building review, submission date was 2020, end of 2020. end of 2020? Or is there, and I'm assuming we just haven't received any, the SCR hasn't received any, you know, whether we're getting it or not. So it's just kind of in limbo. Is there a certain point where we just say, I guess we're not getting, you know, like it's, how, how come this one's taken so long? And at what point does it get kind of abandoned? Thanks.
CFO?
Thank you for the question. I think that staff are also in the same line of questioning. And as this report circulated, I think there is some action. So staff are on holidays. So we're going to follow up with those particular staff to see whether or not they can contact the grantor and see what the status is and whether or not we will have some sort of determination as to go, no-go, if more information's required, et cetera, so we can update the file. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no action required from the board to give them a call or? No? Okay. All right. I don't see any other, any other hands up. So that is, thank you for the report, the update on that. We're going to go to communications now. We have a letter, Annex F on page 124 from UBCM. I was wondering if anybody wants to speak to this? Director, no, Director McMahon, would you like to speak to this?
I believe I was just volunteered. Yes, and I should have looked also at the resolutions from District of Seashore and Town of Gibson's because we do go at this as, as a Sunshine Coast team. Well, some of the answers we got, as usual, are not answers. However, I notice, perhaps because it's an election year, that in one or two places, we have been encouraged to, to give more feedback. So maybe we wish to do that. Certainly on the Modernization of the Local Government Act. And, and I will be, you know, pursuing that at AVICC for sure, because we've got to convince the province that it's a priority. I believe our CIO and our Chair have been working on the funding formula problem and transit service delivery model flexibility. They are interested in learning from examples to determine if, how, and where they could be deployed more broadly. So...
Are you suggesting that we become an example?
Well, the Powell River had to create and fund their own Zanga Bus program, which is now being held out as an example, but they're still paying for it because BC Transit hasn't gotten on board with that particular program. So whatever we can do to, to be innovative, I don't know. As usual, these, these responses were somewhat disappointing. Seashore put in a resolution about putting utility fees onto, onto, onto the property tax deferment program. And basically, the province said no. And I'm not sure what we can do about that one to follow up in terms of advocacy, because it is in the electoral areas particularly. This is not so much a problem in places like Metro Vancouver. But it is a problem for us here. So perhaps directors want to discuss this? Do we want to raise it at AVICC? I am hosting the Electoral Area Directors Luncheon, which I hope you're all signed up for. Yeah, where could, where could we take this next in, in elevating it? We've already gone through the resolution process. Now what? I mean, we can keep doing it, but when you read through the resolutions books, you can see examples of resolutions that have been passed like 25 times. And if they're still saying no, another resolution I don't think is actually going to, is going to get us anywhere. So perhaps we can have this discussion over lunchtime.
Thank you. Thank you, Director McMahon, and always for your tireless work at the UBCM and AVICC level. I'm going to look to Director Lee for comment or questions.
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, I read through these very, actually quite carefully because we get answers that are non-answers. That's quite normal. But I, I think the one that the Local Government Act changes continues to be a hot topic throughout the regional districts. And I think we have to figure out a way of following up on it. And I really like Director McMahon's suggestion that we have to continue to go, even though it's a repeat. But we need to, and I think what we need to do is, is very clearly state what we want to see changed. Because I quite often lose that. But then I also think, I have a question of our CIO. I think he might know the answer to the one. One of the things we've been looking for and we thought was quite important is the ability to issue business licenses in certain situations rather than automatically issue business licenses. But I heard at the conference I was just at, is that it's going to be mandatory to take, start issuing business licenses for short-term rentals? Is, is that correct? Does anybody know about that?
Go ahead, CIO. We have to look into that further. I'm not sure if that's, if that's locked in and nobody on the senior leadership team is aware of whether or not that's the case. So we will look into it further. Thank you.
I was hoping one of them was off our list.
Thank you.
The other one that's really interesting is the ability, they call it the ability to tax. But what that means is if we issue fines and people refuse to pay the fines, we can put it on their property tax. That one hasn't been done, but that's, those, those are the kind of things that we need to follow up on, I believe. So that's it for my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to look to Director Lumley.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd have to agree with, I guess, well, both directors that spoke, Director McMahon. I don't know what you can find out at AVICC or, it just seems like even the, the most disturbing response, I mean, all these are endorsed. It seems like you don't get like a pointed response. It's, I mean, if you read the Transit Service, I could swear that it was, these responses seem to be like AI responses. I mean, it's almost like people aren't even, like, we're not getting people reading and discussing and responding to these. So, I mean, loved ones and like, I mean, you read it, you just shake your head. So anyway, that's my only comment was just, sometimes you just, the confidence is eroding every time one of these motions comes back, these resolutions comes back. And it, it almost seems like there's been no thought put into it. That's, that's my comment.
Thank you, Director Lumley. That was really funny. And sadly, could be true. I don't know. So if we have no other discussions on these, on this particular correspondence, I'm going to move on to the next bit of correspondence. On Annex G, page 129, 130, we have some requests from the, is it the Farmers Institute? And these requests have triggered a notice of motion, which is, now I'm going to segue into new business. We have a notice of motion from Director Gabias. Are there any questions about this particular correspondence before we go into new business? Director Gabias has a question?
Thank you. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I would completely understand if there was no answer to this question right now. But the, does staff know how many commercial food growers are registered at the moment? And if, and just for like, just to understand the commercial rates? And are these, are those commercial food growers all on volumetric billing starting this January?
I'm not sure who can answer that. Jim Rosenbaum, perhaps?
Thank you for the question. I don't have the number with me at the moment, but I know that I've lost several months. Oh, the farms that meet the definition as currently is included in the bylaw are, are metered and are, in our systems are transferred to metered system.
So we have a small number of, of food growing farms that are metered and they are being charged a commercial rate at the moment. Is that, is that correct? Okay. And I have a question about the commercial rate as it pertains to, I guess, I guess we can't, we can't look at the commercial rate and a residential rate that we don't have yet, can we? So that'll have to wait. We have a, we have a flat rate for residential. So Director Lee has a question about this, about this correspondence?
Yes, a question and a comment. Mostly a comment. I, I'd become aware of the small, small farms and how they make exceptional use of their land and the high productivity that comes off of it. And not only that, though, but they take such good care of the land. It's better when they finish than it was when they started. And that's a, it's an excellent, excellent enterprise. It's something we all need to encourage. And it takes me back to my youth when times were tough here on the coast and everybody had a garden. That's how you survived. You didn't have the, the wealth to go buy everything. And in fact, it wasn't even available here on the coast. So this is something we really do need to encourage. And I would encourage all directors to go with Director Gabias and Director McMahon and tour these little farms and talk to the operators. It really opened my eyes, eyes, and are very sympathetic. The question is, how do we get there? And, you know, we can't subsidize businesses. That's one of the things that we have to figure out how to do it. And we have work to do. And I'm sure supportive of it all. But, so I just wanted to thank Director Gabias and Director McMahon for all their hard work in this, in this area. They've took it upon themselves and they sure educated me. So I wanted to thank them. That's it.
Thank you, Director Lee. Yeah, and being a very dependent community with such a small food growing base is, can be worrisome at times. Our food security is very much at risk. So I'm going to move on to new business if there are no more comments. Director Gabias, you have a notice of motion. Is it possible for you to share your screen so we can all see it? I'm sorry, I asked you that at the last minute, maybe.
It is, it is on an, in an email at this point, so I don't know how that would work out. Well, it's...
We have Director Toth will take care of this for you.
Well, we will not debate it or vote on it today if that happens.
Just an introduction of the notice of motion today.
I'm just reading it out. It will be in the minutes and it will be in a, in a future agenda. I believe it will be April 25th is the next one. Yeah. So I'm happy to read it. Okay, so it's actually two motions. One is policy development to support commercial food growing farms. And it goes something like this. Whereas local food production contributes to our local economy and is critical to the Sunshine Coast region's resilience in the face of global instability and climate change, and whereas the agricultural landscape of the Sunshine Coast is unique and reliable, data and information is needed in order to develop fair and effective policies. And whereas the SCR has an agricultural amenities fund in the amount of approximately $86,000, therefore be it resolved that staff work in collaboration with the Farmers Institute to develop a budget proposal for 2025 funded by the Agricultural Amenities Fund that would develop water use and OCP-related policy to support commercial food growing farms in the Sunshine Coast Regional District. So that is motion number one. Motion number two is extension of stage four exemptions for commercial food growing farms. Whereas a two-year exemption from stage four restrictions, and that was for 2023 and 2024, for commercial food growing farms was granted in 2023 in order to offer temporary relief while a more permanent solution for commercial farm water use was developed. And whereas a more permanent solution has yet to be developed, therefore be it resolved that the current stage four exemptions for commercial food growing farms be extended to 2028 or until agricultural water and land use policies are developed and adopted. That's it.
Thank you, Director Gabias. And just so the public knows that this is a notice of motion, we're not going to be debating or voting on this today. It will be coming back to the board on April 25th. But now it is in the public record. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. Oh, wait, you have a question? Go ahead, Director Easter.
...to remind us that there's farms that need water. Is this, these two motions only applicable to the regional district water service areas? Is that the intention? There's other water service areas in the Sunshine Coast. Thanks.
This is a question for me?
Well, I can tell you that we, we don't control anybody else's water supply. If you're talking about Gibson's, absolutely not. This is, this is only, this is in our purview and this would apply to the water that we supply to our customers, constituents.
So through, through you to Director Gabias, there, there, there is other farms on the Sunshine Coast that maybe we should, if we, once we discuss this and is there any way to provide them with those other jurisdictions with information to, after this is discussed? I mean, because there's other farm, farms on the coast. There's a number in Gibson's too. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Procedurally, I'll just say that this would be an appropriate discussion to have once the motion is actually tabled. It's, it's not on the floor right now for discussion, debate, or questions. So...
Thank you. Thank you for keeping us honest.
Thank you.
All right. Somebody has to, definitely. So we have no in-camera for today's meeting. I am currently looking for a motion to adjourn. Oh, I have one. Very good. A second. All in favor? That's great. Thank you very much. And we'll see you this afternoon.